Is everybody ready? Sorry about that. This is the regular city council meeting for Monday, March 18th, 2019. Will everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Welcome, everybody, to TK. Seen a lot of new faces that I haven't seen in awhile. And we're gonna start off with a couple of proclamations that I will do from the front here. This is my reading exercise. Public school education is about that. If I still know how to read, I often wonder sometimes. Okay, first on the agenda is... Is this on? First on the agenda is proclamation recognizing Mike Hall, Leukemia and Lymphomia Society Man of the Year nominee. Mike, are you here? Why don't you come on up? You read this real fast. This is proclamation for Mike. Whereas the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society Man and Woman of the Year campaign is a philanthropic competition to support blood cancer research, whereas those raising the most funds during a ten-week campaign are awarded the prestigious title of man or woman of the year in their community, while those raising the most in the United States are recognized as the national man and woman of the year. Whereas from the Leukemia and Lymphomia Society Man and Woman of the Year leadership team and chosen from three hundred of Charlotte's heaviest influences, Mike Wall, a TK resident, was among the top twenty individuals who were nominated. And Mike Hall is looking forward to including the TK community to participate and honor two local children who are blood cancer survivors. And now therefore be it proclaimed, the mayor and city council of the city of TK honor Mike Hall with this proclamation and recognize his dedication to making a difference in the community and to helping the Leukemia and Lymphomia Society find a cure for cancer. We further encourage TK residents to know, understand, and participate in the local efforts of the Leukemia and Lymphomia Man and Woman of the Year campaign. Sign this eighteenth day of March, David L. O'Neil, Mayor of the City of TK.
Thanks a lot, I really appreciate it. You know, my family and I love TK and how this community helps each other so much. So when I started taking this on...
You're on TV though.
Okay. So when I decided to take this on, you know, it was a chance to do something and try to make a difference to find a cure for cancer. And LLS is doing such amazing work, and I really think we're gonna see a cure for cancer because of their work. So I'm really excited to have your support and get the community involved and see what we can do to make a difference. So thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming in. Here you go. Keep doing a good work. Our next proclamation, oh boy, this is a big one. Brian White? Come on up here, sit down. Mom gonna be okay? She's got a little teary eye there for me. Breathe, just breathe. Alright, let me read this. It's a proclamation and you're on. You must've done something pretty good. Alright. This is proclamation recognizing Eagle Scout project by Ryan White. Whereas, sorry, Brian White, did I say Ryan? Whereas Brian White has proven himself to be an outstanding member of the Boy Scouts of America, and whereas it's taken many years of dedication and commitment to achieve Eagle rank. Wow, that's something. Eagle Scouts act as leaders and role models in the community, whereas the Eagle Scout award is a distinction that will follow him throughout life and will be a beacon to others of the leadership quality and commitment this young man has shown. Whereas citizens of the city of TK appreciate his hard work in coordinating and getting forty-five fire hydrants painted in the last six months throughout the city. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and council of the city of TK do hereby congratulate and recognize Brian White for his achievement toward the rank of Eagle Scout. We are proud to have him as a member of our community. Sign this eighteenth day of March, 2019, David L. O'Neil, Mayor of the City of TK. Hold that with this hand? Long hand, the other left hand? Want the parents? Want the parents, come on up here. Continue to hold that, that's your proclamation statement forever.
Mom want you in?
Yeah, get in there, get in there.
Do you want to say anything about your project? So I noticed there are some blue fire hydrants out there, is that the color?
Uh, no.
What color are you painting?
Uh, red, orange, and green.
I was just kidding.
I would just like to thank the city of TK and most importantly, Mr. Philip Jolly for being so committed to with this project and being easy to reach out to and just, yeah, thank you.
Alright, Manning, you're next. I'm gonna flip this around in my incredible strength. Oh! There you go, and you're up. These microphones scare me.
First of all, Ryan, congratulations. I'm an old Eagle Scout myself, and good for you, because I know what an accomplishment that is, good for you.
Really something.
Mayor O'Neil, members of council, thank you for allowing Pathways to be here with you tonight to formally introduce you to what this organization is all about and hopefully to get your support. Before I get too much further, we have some of our board members here, our chairman, what's your name? Oh, yeah. Charles Price, Eddie Brown, and Bruce McKagan are with us this evening. Have any of you heard anything at all about Pathways over the last number of weeks?
Mm-hmm, they all downloaded it from your link that you asked for.
I want you to know that although we are a nonprofit, we really are a facilitator to help other nonprofits. The whole idea is to try to come up with a better way for these nonprofit agencies to serve those who are in a homeless condition. Rather than sending them all over the county, we're trying to put them under one roof. And basically what we've done is to replicate successful ventures like this in other cities. In our case, particularly Columbia, South Carolina, where we visited many times and talked to them, their organization down there is known as Transitions. But you'll find similar organizations like this in Charlotte, also over in the Greenville-Spartanburg area and other places across the country. The reason to do this is real simple. I don't have to tell you all that the population of York County is growing. In fact, it's almost scary when you think about the projections from ORFATs as to what is gonna happen here in York County. A fifty percent increase over the next ten years, and the Charlotte metro is going to grow by a million people in the next thirty years. So with all that growth, so too will the numbers of people who have issues with homelessness, with alcohol, the whole list goes on and on. So before I do anything else, let me cue a video that is about four and a half minutes long that will tell you the story of Transitions and what we are going to be doing here at Pathways.
Imagine a single location in York County that's big enough to house the dozens of service agencies needed to end homelessness. But has it ever been done? It's not only possible, but it's a reality in several neighboring communities, including our own state capital.
Success is partnering, one stop, it's hands-on helping people, because you really have a special population here that needs some help. So you really gotta get people together behind the effort, and then I think neighborhoods in the end will see it, hey, this is a good thing. I mean, people have a place to go, and you're back to that standard message. The neighborhoods say, hey, go to Pathways. It's not, well, what do you need? It's, sir, you need to go to Pathways. Whatever the need is, and then let the professionals at Pathway, the partners, figure out the right issues and what needs to happen.
Many Carolina communities have already taken dynamic steps in fighting homelessness. York County now stands ready to take its own major step forward.
The city of Rock Hill has been committed to working with our homeless population for some ten years now, putting together plans, bringing people together, trying to look at how we look at homelessness in a holistic fashion. And that's what a successful community does. With the creation of Pathways, with the creation of the opportunity for all of our homeless people in our community to get together at one place to get services they need, that's the definition of a significant community, one that steps up and does more for those that need help. So I'm very supportive of the work of Pathways, I'm very supportive of individual agencies that are working in that regard, and I look forward to the results that we know that will come.
I'm excited about returning home to Rock Hill and finding the creative leadership and tremendous opportunities that lie here. Pathways is one of them. That innovative vision will have a tremendous impact on our community.
It's exciting to be part of the mounting number of regional agencies coming together to help make the Pathways dream come true.
One of the major tenants of the ten-year plan was to create a single point of entry for our homeless clients. We know that, looking at best practices around the state, that we've studied this and we are ready. We are ready to develop Pathways Community Center, because we know that that service delivery model will approach it in a holistic way, that the client will enter our system and be able to have outcomes that we've never been able to maintain before.
Nearly all the vital services needed to end homelessness in one location, what a blessing.
After living in York County for twenty-eight years and serving the Charlotte community for over twenty-one years, I am elated about this exciting opportunity in this region. CCA looks forward to participating in this effort.
This is such an outstanding example of a community coming together that was once just working independently in their own little silos to address this problem, but joining forces to focus on the needs of this particular segment of our society, to make sure that they have everything that they need to be put back on the path of being a productive citizen rather than the path to the Moss Justice Center.
Rock Hill's ten-year plan to respond to homelessness has said dozens of service agencies, the city, the county, our churches, and citizens are ready to play our role to end homelessness.
Now is the time for our entire community to come together to help the Pathways Community Center become a reality.
Together, we stand ready to fight homelessness. A single point of entry for those in need. Pathways Community Center, this is our time. Will you join us?
And that's exactly why we're here tonight. We hope that TK will join in this countywide initiative to try to deal with the growing issue of homelessness, which really is going to be throughout York County. If you haven't seen it here yet, you will see it eventually. Now let me tell you how this is going to work. We have acquired, I believe you all have a handout that I have put on your desk. If you will take a look at the second page on Milestones, we really have had quite an interesting journey. We really got formally put together sometime in January of 2018 is when we got our incorporation period of papers, we got our 501(c)(3) designation, and as you can work your way down this winding road, you'll find where we are now. And where we are now is we have acquired, as you will see on the last page of the handout, a forty thousand square foot building, which is the old West End School right on Cherry Road in Rock Hill. And that building is in the process of being retrofitted for the over thirty agencies which have expressed an interest in coming in and using this facility, either on a full-time basis, or on a part-time basis, or on an at-requested basis. These agencies, I will tell you, when we first introduced this concept over a year ago, they were a little bit hesitant and didn't understand what Pathways was all about. But now they understand that Pathways is not trying to change the way they do business, we just want them to be side-by-side because we think they can do business better and certainly help those in need much better by sending them down a hallway rather than all across the county trying to get the services they need. The whole idea is to get these people back up on their feet, make them productive members of society, and so they can move on with their lives. I will tell you that we've had a tremendous amount of success in a short period of time with fundraising. To date, we've raised 1.6 million dollars in cash and in pledges. The building that we acquired is 1.4 million. We put a very substantial down payment on that building, a little over $400,000, and we have a relationship with South State Bank where we have a short-term loan, about three years to pay that building off. But they have been a good partner to get us to where we are right now. We have, most interestingly, from our own board members, they have put their money where their mouth is. $221,000 has been pledged by our board towards this project. We have received to date $75,000 from the city of Rock Hill. We have made a presentation to the York County Council, and that is in the works. We are here tonight to the TK City Council and will be making similar presentations to the Fort Mill City Council, Clover Town Council, and the York, City of York Council as well. This is, again, a countywide initiative. The website, as you see, is pathwaysyc.org. Yes, the facility is in Rock Hill, but it is a countywide initiative. How are we gonna get people there? Well, we have two ways of bringing people. Let's just say we get a call from your department here that we have somebody who needs some help. How are we gonna get them from TK to Rock Hill? We have two avenues. One, we have worked out an arrangement with York County Access. Well, they will put them on the list, come pick them up, bring them down, and if that doesn't work out, we're gonna have our own vehicle, and we will come and fetch the individual and get them down and plugged into the services that Pathways will be providing. Uh, let's see, what else have I left up here? I should tell you that Pathways is paying for all of the outfit costs for the building, and that's why we are here tonight to ask your help. Specifically, we would appreciate a $25,000 participation in this effort. We're using it entirely for capital outfit costs, it is not for operational costs. We are working on other avenues to establish our ongoing operational needs. Pathways will have 24-hour security, we will have Wi-Fi there. For all of the tenants who are gonna be in there, they will be paying a rent, but a very, very reduced rent, way below market value, and all the services of security, Wi-Fi, et cetera, will be provided to them. So, questions?
Do you have any questions?
Please. Oh, come on.
I'm sure you'll get one in a minute.
Yeah, no, I'm very familiar with a lot of the organizations on your list here. I've worked with a lot of, several of them specifically, so I think it's a great, great opportunity, and we appreciate you coming.
Well, I would appreciate your serious consideration of this, and I hope that you'll reach out to us if there's any other information that we can fill in.
Sir, do you have a paid staff?
Not yet.
So it's just you're all volunteers right now?
This is all volunteers, everything we're doing is through volunteers.
I see.
We will have some paid staff, but a very limited amount of paid staff. Our operational budget, we're anticipating, once we're fully operational, will be somewhere around $300,000 a year, and most of that is going to be going to security, because you can imagine what 24-hour security is going to be. I will tell you that, just to give you one of the highlights that's not on this timeline, but it was reported, I hope you saw the news, but last Friday, we were very pleased to have a surprise visit from Bryant Barnes, who is the CEO of Comporium, and he walked in and gave us a check for $100,000 and said that they're solidly behind us. I will add that Comporium has already sent over one of their pioneer club crews, about twenty individuals with all kinds of Comporium equipment, and they saved us probably another $25,000 or $30,000 in cleanup work that had to be done to the perimeter fencing and the grounds that we had. So they have been very supportive, as have a number of other individuals and companies, and that's what's gotten us to where we are with the 1.6 million dollars.
So your primary contact right now is through email? I don't see a phone number, but that's, that'll suffice for now.
That's correct, that's correct. But you know where I am.
I know where you are, sure. Well, Manning, thanks for coming. We will give this serious consideration in our next budget meeting. Until then, is there something we can do between now and that budget meeting? Can we put it on our social media?
Please.
Can we?
Please, help us get the word out any way as you can.
Support it in other ways? Our bulletin board, our electronic bulletin board up front, or things like that?
And any of your citizen groups in TK that want to get involved? Because we need not only dollars, but we need manpower as well. Because as these agencies start to move into their respective spaces, which will be, you know, one at a time, two at a time, something like that, they're gonna have some needs. They're gonna need some help with moving, they're gonna need some help with painting, they're gonna need some help with whatever. So there's, we can't get enough volunteers to help us out.
Great, okay. Anything else, last call?
Well, I can't bring manpower, but I can bring well-man power.
Well, man, that's, that's the best kind.
And I'd be more than happy to do that.
We want the brains of the operation, yes.
Well, there you go, right there.
There we go.
Thanks for coming, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
And you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't want, people get up in the middle of our council meeting all the time and come and go. You will be sufficiently bored if you stay here, but you're welcome to stay if you want to. You can hear my unbelievable orator skills. That's what I meant. Gonna be, I'm gonna be a radio guy someday. I already got the face for radio. Go ahead.
Thanks.
Keep doing good things there.
Congratulations.
Yes, sir. Okay. Anything we can do, you let us know. You need any sludge, she's giving away free sewage, too. All you need.
All you can eat.
Alright, all you can eat, no, no. Alright, next is item number two, public comments. Nobody signed up for public comments? Is anybody that came late that would wanna address us in any way, tell us anything? Anybody, last time, you wanna stand up and talk? Okay, we'll move on to the approval minutes. Council, you've been, you've received a copy of the minutes. Are there any additions, subtractions, or deletions, or changes? None, I see, well, the minutes stand as published. Next, item four is the committee reports. We'll start with Economic Development Commission.
Okay, so we met, the Economic Development Commission met for the first time since October, is that right? November? October, November? So it had been a while, and so we are just talking about how we are going to, I mean, you have to think about this committee as still kind of in its infancy. I know I've said that quite a few times, but they've really only met three or four times in the past fiscal year, so, or year, completely. And so we're really just trying to get off the ground, and so we've just been talking about how to bring what we need to TK. We have a lot of retail locations coming on board, and so how do we make sure that we're making the best use of the space, and how do we bring the businesses that we want to TK? So there wasn't a whole lot of major discussion there. So, and half of the committee is actually turning over this next month, so we'll be ramping back up with that. So not a whole lot going on with economic development. TK Forever, though, we did have our business gala that was hosted on Thursday, March 7th, down here at the Glennon Center, right above us. We had quite a good turnout from local businesses in the community. Our goal there is to really garnish corporate sponsorships, not just from large businesses, but from any businesses around the community. So we had some speakers, Joey Blevin, who's our Parks and Rec director, Charlie Funderburke, our city manager, Senator Wes Kleimer was there, the director of the York County Economic Development Committee. So we had a lot of different speakers, and we're just kind of ready to hit the ground running in requesting those funds, similar to what Mr. Manning did tonight, and we'll be doing to local businesses in the community to help raise money for Catawba Park. So those of you that aren't familiar with Catawba Park, it's a sixty-two acre facility, six soccer, multi-use fields, four baseball fields, amphitheater, mile and a half of walking trails, dog park, passive recreation space, a lot more used to the boat ramp and the Catawba River, obviously. And I think that's about it. Any questions?
Any questions in the audience? Hold on. Any questions from the audience? No? Alright, thank you. We'll move on to TK Forever Foundation. I'm sorry, the TK Economic Development, no, you're gonna do that one. Okay, let's go to item five. She was showing me how to use my computer. Item five, talk about committee appointments. Turn it over to city manager Charlie Funderburke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Here in just a moment, we'll go committee by committee. I'll announce the nominees that were presented by council, and then let y'all vote committee by committee. But I do want to, before I say that, thank you to everybody that applied. We have more people apply for committees, commissions, the forever board, things like that, that I've seen since I started working with the city nineteen years ago. It was absolutely amazing to have that many people want to get involved. I would say if you're not appointed tonight, reach out to us. We still have lots of other volunteer opportunities, both with Parks and Rec, Beautification Committee, and a host of other things with our events and things like that. Love to still have you involved if you've got that volunteer spirit, no doubt. So with that being said, on the Board of Zoning Appeals, you have five, excuse me, four openings. The following four names were the top nominees. Nicole Leotis, Mike Tullos, Amy Jo Denton, and Walt Krasinski.
Motion to approve as presented by the city manager.
Second.
Second by Heather Overman. Any questions or comments for everybody? Time to vote, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, it's unanimous.
Okay, on the Economic Development Commission, there were four openings. Your top nominees are Don Masters, Michelle Nance, Leroy Denton, and Ashley Sullivan.
I have a motion, motion as presented by the city manager. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Alicia. Time to vote, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, it's unanimous.
Alright, on, let's see, next is Planning Commission. There were three openings. The top nominees, Jason Pittcock, Rebecca Richardson, and Kate Forbes were your top nominees there.
I'd like to make a motion as presented by the city manager. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, it's unanimous. Stormwater?
The next one, Stormwater, we've got five openings, we had three people apply. All three were unanimously nominated. Malobi Atchik, and I apologize, I'm sure I messed that up, Donald Olson, and Crystal Good.
I'd like to make a motion as presented by the city manager. Second by Gus Machinas, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, it's unanimous.
And your last one is the TK Forever Foundation. There are five openings for that board, and your top five nominees are Christina Wilson, Ben Ullman, Laura Saunders, Megan Nelson, and Patrick Britts.
I'd like to make a motion as presented by the city manager. Second by Heather Overman, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, it's unanimous. Alright, thank you for everybody who put in their, who nominated themselves to be put into one of the committees. We, in the past, woefully, were short of people, and people always ask, what can I do to help the city? We said, you know, come on to one of our committees, and you heard us, and there's nineteen in one case, or eighteen, and so appreciate everybody who came on, and all the people who've been on forever and weren't re-voted on, thanks for your service, you've been here, in one case, Mr. Burns was here, what, twenty, thirty years? Twenty years? Twenty years? Thank you for your twenty years of service, we appreciate it. Kathy was here fourteen, thirteen years?
The top nominees, Jason Pittcock, Rebecca Richardson, and Kate Forbes were your top nominees there.
I'd like to make a motion as presented by the city manager. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's unanimous.
The next one, Stormwater, we've got five openings. We had three people apply. All three were unanimously nominated. Malobi Atchik, and I apologize, I'm sure I messed that up, Donald Olson, and Crystal Good.
I'd like to make a motion as presented by the city manager. Second by Gus Machinus. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's unanimous.
And your last one is the Tika K Forever Foundation. There are five openings for that board. And your top five nominees are Christina Wilson, Ben Ullman, Laura Saunders, Megan Nelson, and Patrick Brits.
I'd like to make a motion as presented by the city manager. Second by Heather Overman. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's unanimous. All right, thank you for everybody who, who, who put in their, who nominated themselves to be put into one of the committees. We, in the past, woefully were short of people and people always ask, what can I do to help the city? We said, you know, come on to one of our committees. And you heard us, and there's 19 in one case, or 18. So appreciate everybody who came on and all the people who, who've been on forever and weren't re-voted on. Thanks for your service. You've been here, in one case, Mr. Burns was here, what, 20, 30 years? 20 years? 20 years. Thank you for your 20 years of service. We appreciate it. Kathy was here 14, 13 years? Something like that? Is that right? So thank you for your service, for everything you all have done. And look forward to more people nominating. If you weren't chosen this last time, please renominate yourself for the last time, for the next time. All right, so let's move on to item six, unfinished business. This is the second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 14, Article 2 of the Code of the Business Licenses. This is the second and final reading of this ordinance to amend the business license portion of our code to keep the current, to keep it current with a model ordinance of business licenses the state has asked all municipalities to use. Primarily, it clarifies the definition of gross income and changes the business license year, which was April 1st through March 31st, is now May 1st through April 30th. Any comments or questions? From the audience, any comments or questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 14, Article 2 of the Code Business Licenses.
I have a motion from Gus Machinus. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ryan Richard. Are there any questions from the audience before we vote on this? Any comments? All right, time to vote. Please, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's unanimous. Move on to item number seven. Okay, item number seven, A, Street Acceptance on Xenia Way. Development of Lake Ridge in Gardendale has petitioned the city to accept into the city's ownership for maintenance all the right-of-way and associated infrastructure of the remainder of Xenia Way as shown by record map titled Final Pla, Phase 2 Pod H Map 2. The street and infrastructure to be dedicated has been inspected by the city engineer and operations director, who have determined that they meet the city standards for acceptance. In addition, the city attorney has reviewed and approved the title and deed of all affidavits and release of liens. Any questions before we move on? Any comments from anybody? First chance. All right, I will entertain a motion. Nobody wants to make a motion tonight? Everybody's still...
Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve street acceptance of Xenia Way into the city's street inventory.
I have a motion by Alicia Dash. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan Richard. No further questions? We'll time to vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's unanimous. Seven B. Okay, this is the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to enter into a utility asset agreement, emergency water connection agreement, and sewer agreement with Rock, I mean, York County. These three complex agreements are another example of how government entities should work together for the betterment of the people they serve. In short, the city will receive a large service territory of future water and sewer customers and will take ownership of the county's water line that used to serve the traditional part of Tika K. The city will now own that line, starting at Palmetto West instead of Shoreline Parkway. This will add some immediate commercial utility customers that are currently outside of our city limits, but completely surrounded by the city. In these agreements, there is also provision for the county to construct, own, operate, and maintain a regional lift station that will accept flow from Windhaven and these future areas. This helps the county with the sewer system by allowing them to pull this lift station within their territory, and the city doesn't have the expense of maintaining it. This sounds like Phil's, right up Phil's line. Is this a good agreement, Phil? All right, more sludge? Does that mean we're in charge of more sludge?
No, we're not in charge.
We're not in charge of more sludge. We're giving away our sludge.
Yes.
Like that even better. Any other questions? Any comments from the gallery?
Mayor, if I can, up on the, up on the screen, this is an exhibit within the utility asset agreement. So you, the, the lower bottom square there, on the gray area, is where the current connection is. It's right beside the fountain, just to give you kind of a frame of reference. There, across from City Hall. Where it will move to is right up Gold Hill Road to where that next black square is, which is basically at the entrance of Palmetto West. So that's where the meter will be moved to. So we will own that line from that meter point coming into the peninsula. The hatched out, the darker gray areas, they're, they're actually hatched out when you look at it closely. That's our jurisdictional territory right now with River Falls, the elementary school in Windhaven. The lighter gray areas are outside of our jurisdictional limit and in a lot of cases, surrounded by our limit. There is no water and sewer infrastructure there from the county there, where they do have developed land. It is watering, excuse me, well and septic. At such time that it does develop in the future. Doesn't have to come into the city limits, but it, by moving this, this agreement forward, they'll have to come to us for water and sewer, which is a good thing. The regional lift station that the mayor was talking about, it saves us from, you know, Windhaven having, the Windhaven developer having to construct a lift station and then subsequently deed it over to us to own, operate, and maintain. And then all the force mains coming out of it, tying into our system, go to Rock Hill. Again, that's an added expense for us. By being able to end our service at, if you look on this map, that red circled area, that's where it would end, at our point of connection with them, which it would be at that regional lift station. So definitely saves us future dollars, no doubt about it. We give them the opportunity to put that lift station in our territory. In exchange for that, we get those future areas and that, and that water line. So it's, it's definitely a big win for us from the utility standpoint.
All right, thank you very much. So I guess at this point, is there any other comments or anybody? I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, a motion to approve the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to enter into a utility asset agreement, an emergency water connection agreement, and a sewer agreement with York County and authorize the city manager to execute all documents associated with said agreements.
I have a motion from Heather Overman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ryan Richard. Okay, time to vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's unanimous. All right, item eight, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a quick reminder, the Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament is next Friday, March 29th. We still have room for, for a few more teams. So if you're out there playing along at home or watch this later this week, get signed up. Get your team signed up. It's all the, all the proceeds coming from that tournament. Go to help run and support our community events, like our food truck rallies, Fourth of July Fall Festival, and all the great things we do during the holidays, the Christmas holidays. So again, we're getting, getting close to time. Got a, got a few more spots left if you want to get your team signed up. So please, please do so as quick as you can. The Legislative Breakfast, hosted by York County Chamber of Commerce, as council's aware, is on Friday, April the 5th. I know some of you are planning on attending. From council, if you haven't RSVP'd yet with Sylvia, please try to do so tomorrow if possible, or let her know this evening at the conclusion of the meeting. Tomorrow, Wednesday, council, y'all got a memo from Chief Parker earlier today. We've also pushed this out to the public, but our police department is hosting a countywide training upstairs here in the Glennon Center. Between the two days, we expect approximately 400 law enforcement officials from around the county coming in for, for that training. Just again, want to make sure everybody's aware, when they start seeing tons and tons of law enforcement vehicles up here at the Glennon Center, everything is okay. We're just doing a training. So we're glad to see the TCPCD taking the lead on that. Spring sports have begun. If you, if you drove anywhere in Tika K Saturday, you probably saw activity everywhere. So please be careful when driving around Rundy and Turner and Lookout Parks, and always out there in front of the elementary school. In the evenings and on Saturdays, going to be a lot of increased traffic, foot traffic, kids on bikes, things like that. So just be on the lookout and be aware. Spring sports have finally begun. Hopefully, the weather will continue to cooperate. They can continue to do their thing. As Ms. Overman mentioned earlier, we had a great corporate event at Kataba Park earlier this month. We'll begin meeting with those business owners around the region, probably mid to late April. We're finalizing some marketing pieces specific to those, to those companies. And then we'll be meeting with them, see how they can help us fund the construction of that park and get involved. So definitely exciting stuff there. While we're on Kataba Park, we had a great, we came up with a great fundraiser. Already got people signing up, participating in it. It's a way for you as your family to support Kataba Park as we're, as we're working on those funds. It's $100 per family. You can sign up online. Go to our Parks and Rec page. It's, it's 100 bucks, 100 bucks for the year. You get a Kataba Park t-shirt. You also have the ability to buy additional t-shirts for your family. We've got big signs being made to put up at Rundy and at Turner Fields that'll list all the names of each family. So not a lot of money, but a little goes a long way. So want to make sure that everybody's got the opportunity to, to get involved. On April the 7th is All Play Together Night at Charlotte Knights Stadium. They've got, you're going to see them up on the big Jumbotron. They're selling tickets for the game, so hit up Laura Saunders or any of the board members. They can get you, get you a ticket for the game. Go out with your family. They're going to be on site, taking donations as well to hopefully close this last, final little gap, funding gap, so we can start construction on that park. So great fundraiser there. We encourage everybody to, to get involved. I think they've got more information on their website, which is allplaytogether.com, I do believe. Last but certainly not least, the new police station's come along nicely, council. Got to see that on Saturday with a little behind-the-scenes tour. Yeah, we're making great progress. Still a little behind schedule with all the rain over the winter. But we're still shooting for a late August, early September ribbon, ribbon cutting, if the weather continues to cooperate. So as we get a little closer to that move-in date, we can start solidifying that ribbon-cutting date and let the community know so they can come be a part of it. And that concludes my report for the evening, sir.
Are we still doing the 1982 stickers? So I've got a sticker. It might be worth something someday. I keep it. 1982, what was that? The 1982 foundation or something? Okay. Okay, let's go with council comment. Council comments. We'll start with Ryan Richard.
I'm good. Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Alicia?
Well, I do want to just say a quick thank you to council and city staff for the workshop we had. What was it, two weeks ago now? I thought it was really helpful to go through all of it and learn more about what the goals are for the next couple of years and, and walk through that. So thank you for doing that and thank you for dedicating yet another Saturday to that event and, or that purpose. And then congratulations to those committees' appointments and thank you to those who have served in the past. So that means a lot and it's really helpful for Tika K. So thank you.
Gus?
Charlie took it all. I did want to mention the Lions Club Shrimp Boil is this Saturday. They'll have a drive-through set up. Go ahead and get your tickets bought. They're doing a Low Country Shrimp Boil. That'll be Saturday at Station Number Two. All Play Together, one thing Charlie missed is they are doing another tile painting this Saturday as well. Gives you an opportunity to have a mosaic with your family picture, or whatever you want to paint on a tile, and your name in that part for eternity, or as long as it's there, which is eternity. That's about it. At the Glennon Center, here at the Glennon Center. This coming Saturday, during the shrimp boil. You can eat shrimp and come over here and paint a tile. Actually, you can pick up your shrimp and then bring it over here and eat your shrimp while you're painting a tile. All do it at the same time, so everybody can multitask. Everybody who was elected to a committee, thank you for volunteering. Those of you who have served, thank you for your service. That's one of the things that makes the city so special, is all the volunteers. And I would like to wish a happy birthday to my beautiful wife coming this Saturday.
28. Happy 28.
Same thing. Charlie stole like three of mine. I had to cross them out. I just wanted to thank, I just wanted to thank the Tika K Connect Liaisons, Troop 250, and all the volunteers who spent the last week and a half passing out flyers and stickers for our updates to recycling. If you didn't receive one, please let us know or let me know, and I will personally drop one off at your house. I want to make sure everybody's on board and knows, knows the new, the new rules. So thank you to them. And then also, I'm looking forward to attending the Lake Ridge HOA meeting this Thursday. So getting over on that side of town. I don't do it very often, but hanging out with those folks. So, and everything else.
Thank you. Thank you, Heather. I just have, well, one question, a couple of comments. Bob, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but, sorry, I didn't mention this beforehand, but we've had a lot of issues about being in a quorum lately. We all just went to the police station and we did a tour of the police station. And there was four of us, and people might think that, or we're doing blue ribbon cuttings, ribbon cuttings. And, and when we go to Chamber of Commerce meetings for luncheons, or we had All Play Together. We tried to raise money for them, a fundraiser. We were all there together. So there's times that there's more than, there's three of us that are together in the same room. Is that considered a quorum? Is that considered illegal? We're not doing any city business? We just happen to be, if we're in social settings at the same time, we're all at the same ballpark?
I think you're entitled to attend social functions, obviously. And you can go to events as individuals. There's nothing prohibits you from that. I'd say if it looks, walks, and quacks like a meeting, it probably is a meeting. But the things you're describing obviously aren't, aren't meetings. So...
Well, I know we're all going to the Chamber, well, most of us, you know, the Chamber of Commerce luncheon is coming up.
I think that's fine.
We just walked through the police station. Instead of doing it three different times, we did it once and everybody looked at the police station. That's fine.
If you hold outside later and discuss police business, that'd be different. And that's, that's the differentiation.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure. There's been a couple of observations. We, seems like, I, I, obviously, if we all were holed up in the same room or the same car or something together for an hour and a half drive, that'd be different. But we're in the open and we're doing things like that. We're not voting, we're not discussing things like that. But just wanted to check. Just to update you on a couple of things, we're still discussing the crosswalks. We're trying to get some money to come in. There's a, we have to get encroachment permits. We have to do pedestrian use studies to see if their pedestrian walks are actually, they're actually going to benefit from it. What else? We got to do a traffic study to see if there's enough traffic to make it a, that we really need a crosswalk there or something.
Waiting on federal highways to bless it.
So you got a lot of, whenever we want to do something, because that's, Tika K Drive is not our street. We still have to, the feds still have to tell us what we can and can't do over there. So we, seems like we were moving pretty fast there and all of a sudden, we came to a dead stop. So we're still working on it. And then another thing I'm working on is a lot of people have asked about a bocce court, something that they can come and do bocce. It's not that expensive, but I've asked them to please come if you want, if you want anything from council, please come up. But they're all very shy about speaking in public and no, we're all, we, none of us like speaking in public. I get that. But, so if you want something done, you kind of have to address the city, city council to say you want something, instead of just coming to one of us or something. So if you want something from city council, please step up to the microphone and, and tell us, and we will listen. I get the emails, but it's not the same if you don't come up here and speak in public. And then lastly, we're going to have to have this issue about public charities. We had a request for $25,000 today. I've had a request for $5,000 from Safe Passage and Catholic Charities USA is requesting money. I've had disabled veterans wanting money. Everybody seems like all of a sudden, they're coming to use city coffers as their source of charities. And we'd like to hear from you guys somehow. If you can call us or email us or let us know what you think about that. If we should use public monies for charities. I kind of have a feeling what most people are going to say. But I think if you guys want to donate to charities, you should do it. And your tax money going to charities is kind of a different subject, because where does it stop? Who's going to come up and ask for donations next time? We give to the Boy Scouts, which is an excellent organization, and which charity is not an excellent organization. But then we'll get, the battered wives will want money and the, you know, the children of Gus Machinus Organization will want money. Nothing personal. It's, it's a, it's a football team. So, so just let us know what you, what you guys think about that. I think I know what these guys think, but we still, we represent you and we want to know what you think. So either they for or against. And with that, I think I'll shut up and I will make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Are there any questions? Now watch this, see who says no. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No? It's always unanimous. Thank you for coming. We're adjourned.